Okay, let's go. Good evening, everybody. We'll call to order the meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals for September the 2nd, 2025, at 7:00 PM. For the record, alternate Commissioner Judy Cleary will be sitting in for Commissioner Poyzon. And I think that's it. So we get, let's get started on, we have a five petitions today, so let's get started. Actually, Ms. Cleary, would you like to call petition number one for us? Yeah, just use your microphone. There you go.
Fifty-three Ashwood Terrace, Petition of Catherine Lance and Benjamin Carlton, Asking a Site Plan Review and Variance of Section 6.13. Three point one B of the fifty-foot setback requirement to an inland wetland in order to install an in-ground swimming pool incidental to a single-family dwelling in a RS1 zone. Hardship. The property is constrained by a regulated wetland and septic field, leaving no feasible yard space for typical pool placement. The hardship results from natural and site-specific limitations, not actions by the applicant.
Very good. Is the petitioner present? Okay, would you please come forward? Give us your name and address and description as to what you were looking for.
I'm Catherine Lance.
Benjamin Carlton.
We live at fifty-three Ashwood Terrace. Yeah, you can see the plans there for an in-ground pool that we'd like to put into our yard. Again, because it has to be set back a certain space from the septic that's in the backyard already. That would put us within the fifty feet from the wetlands. I believe it was about thirty-five feet back. So that's why we were asking for the variance.
Okay. Questions for members, go ahead.
Is the septic still used?
Yes.
Do any of the homes in your area have in-ground pools?
Yes.
Okay.
And so, is that something about?
Let's go.
Were there alternatives to the placement? Probably not, because I was there today. I saw your yard and everything. It looks like there's a lot of space back there, but I guess it's just, you know, where it would be placed, which sounds like you've really accounted for that.
We tried. It's the way the wetland, like, jogs forward through the back of our property. And again, where the septic is behind the house, right? And then it has to be, they explained twenty-five feet from the septic. So that, that kind of was encroaching onto that setback, the fifty-foot setback. It seems like there's a lot of space. You're, you're right.
It does, because you had like a play area to the back of it, but a great big, you know, yard space there.
Correct. So we actually were surprised when we started getting all of the surveys and all of the information, because it's, it's a large lot.
Yeah.
And we have the space. And then when we were made aware, oh, there's wetlands back there and you have to be the fifty feet, but you gotta be twenty-five feet from the septic. I didn't even realize it would be so tight till.
You didn't realize you had a wetlands either, did you?
We didn't until we had like the soil survey done and everything. I was like, oh, okay. Yeah. Basically, it's, it just came out a lot tighter. It, it looks like there's, and there's, there's plenty of space for it. It was just that, that fifty feet back from the wetlands where it starts to go on the diagonal was kind of cutting us short.
Go ahead, Mr. Carroll.
Was anything reviewed or explained to you about reserve area for your septic system in the event that that fails or it has to be replaced?
Yes, they did account for that, because they said there would be space on the side, the side yard if we had to go that way with it.
Okay. So that has been reviewed and approved?
That has been, yes. That was part of the process. Yep.
By the way, it does say that you were approved by the Inland Wetlands Commission. Is that correct? You've appeared before then? Or am I reading?
The pool company did speak with wetlands.
Okay.
I also spoke with her. I went over, when I did the application, she did sign off, even though she noted it was within the boundaries. We talked about keeping the vegetation and also replacing it, which, you know, we do want that area still natural. It gives us a good boundary and some privacy back there.
Yeah.
And we would be replacing anything that had to come out for construction. I did speak with her about that. And, and that's something we're willing to do to preserve it as much as we can.
Okay, the specifically, just to make sure that we have it in the record and it's correct. It says, "The property owners have also received their administrative approval for the proposed work from the Stratford Inland Wetlands Commission, which stated in their approval, 'On the basis of the application materials that were submitted to the Conservation Division in January and March of 2025, the conduct of the proposed regulated activity result in no greater than a minimal impact on the wetlands and water courses of the town of Stratford. On the basis of the authority granted by Section 12.1 of the Stratford Inland Wetlands and Water Courses Regulation, the agency's duly authorized agent has approved the above referenced project with conditions as set forth therein.'" So that's a very positive thing. That's been cleared. Okay. Okay. Any other questions for members? Okay. If not, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there any members of the public that wish to speak in favor of this petition? Anybody wish to speak in favor? Anybody wish to speak in opposition to this petition? Anyone in opposition? Hearing none, we'll take a motion to close this particular item. Mr. Carroll, second, by Ms. Cleary. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. Carries unanimously. Okay, let's move on to petition number two. Ms. Swiele, you want to call that one?
Okay. Petition of Kelly Okrepki and Joseph Aversa, Seeking a Site Plan Review and Variance of 3.2.1C of the Side Yard Setback Requirement and 7.5.1 for the Expansion of Non-Conforming Structure for a Second Floor Addition. No Change in the Footprint to the Existing Single Family Dwelling in RS4 Zone. Hardship Pre-Existing Non-Conforming Lot and Structure.
Okay, the petitioner present? Please come forward, give us your name and address and overview of what you're looking for and what the case is.
Kelly Okrepki, 225 Oak Bluff Avenue. And I'm looking to build vertically, to build a dormer on the second floor on the back of the house.
I just have a, just a question for my own curiosity. You don't have a garage, do you?
No.
You just have a very nice wide driveway.
Yes.
And so that's where you, you can actually park double cars.
Yes.
You could probably fit about eight cars.
Yes.
Beautiful property.
Oh, thank you. Thanks so much.
Okay.
Questions for members?
Are you applying for the front porch addition at this time as well?
We already did in that past.
Okay, that, that was all?
That was separate permits.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Swiele?
Yeah. Commissioner Carroll, the front porch was submitted as part of building permit, which was reviewed and compliant with the front setbacks.
You're adding a second story?
Uh, no, it's a existing second story. We're pretty much just using the attic space. And we're raising the roof.
And the dormer would face in what direction?
Oh, it's the back of the house.
Back of the house. Thank you.
Was just noticing that it seems like it's a fairly common feature in some of the houses in that neighborhood that they have either that, well, they have that second floor, although yours is a little bit well, it's kind of hidden actually from between which angle you look at it. But it seems like it's a fairly common thing to see in that particular neighborhood. And this one, I believe, this was the one that says, okay, so the building was, just to confirm, this was constructed in nineteen fifty-three?
Yes.
Roughly? Okay.
So when it was built, it had what's existing as a side yard setback when it was originally built, right? So you, you don't have to ask for any change?
Oh, no. I do not, no.
Ms. Cleary?
I didn't, I didn't have the package, unfortunately. So where is the neighbor that says, you know, in support of it here? Here's deed.
Oh, the letter's not in there? Oh, okay.
Are they to the left, the right?
Yeah.
You mean this?
That it was.
From a neighbor?
Was he left to right or you, in back of you?
Oh, if you look at the house?
Yeah.
She's to the left.
To the left?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Just to make sure that we're all on the same page here, the copy that I believe we're referring to, it's a letter dated June thirtieth from Denise Tomosko Plude of 235. That's okay. It says, "Greetings, I am the owner of the property at 235 Oak Bluff, and my property borders the property at 225 Oak Bluff. With a variance application before your commission, please accept my full support for the approval of the variance of the property. I have seen the plans for improvements to the property. In my opinion, the complete project will not only enhance the current dwelling, but the street and the neighborhood without, all without any change in the current footprint established in nineteen fifties. As a side note, my father Raymond Tomosko, now deceased, worked as a Stratford High School drafting student intern in Town Hall during this time. These plots on Oak Bluff were being developed. When I purchased my home as a second owner, my father shared his memories of the street as it was being developed and the skills he learned while working at Town Hall. Thank you for your time to hear my thoughts on the variance. I'm happy to provide any other support information that may be required in the future."
A good friend.
Very nice.
Very nice. Okay. And we'd also received a letter of, no, actually, we didn't. I take that back. That's just your letter. Any other questions for members? Okay. Hearing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anybody that wishes to speak in favor of this petition? Anybody wish to speak in favor? Anybody wish to speak in opposition to the petition? Anyone in opposition? Hearing none, we'll take a motion to close this item. Ms. Swiele, second by Mr. Carroll. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Carries unanimously. Ms. Lynch, could you call petition number three, please? Everyone's gonna get a turn today.
Two sixteen Placid Avenue, Petition of Sotiria and Christos Kovatidis, Seeking a Site Plan Review and Variance of 3.2.1C of the Side Yard Setback and the overall building coverage in order to construct a rear addition and deck insidio to an existing single-family dwelling in RS4 zone. Hardship Pre-Existing Non-Conforming Lot and Structure making compliance with the regulations extremely difficult.
Okay, is the petitioner present? Nice to see former Commissioner DeCilio here. Good evening, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Self Commissioner, Selhavy, or Chairman. My name is David DeCilio. I reside at sixty-twenty Main Street, Stratford, Connecticut. And I'm here to present the application on behalf of Sotiria and Christos Kovatidis, who reside at two sixteen Placid Avenue in Stratford. Now, the applicant is requesting two variances in order to put an addition on the rear of their home. The existing home is currently a single-family home on a pre-existing undersized lot in an RS4 zone. Now, the applicant would like to convert an existing screened porch, currently located on the rear of their home, into a bedroom. In order to accommodate that conversion, the applicant will demolish the porch and construct a new one-story addition that is slightly larger than the existing porch. The proposed increase in size will make the room more functional. The existing porch is ten feet deep by sixteen feet wide, and the proposed addition will be six feet larger to sixteen by sixteen. Now, the first variance requested on, is on lot coverage. The zone maximum is twenty-five percent, and the proposed coverage is twenty-eight point one percent. The second variance requested is on side yard setback. The zone minimum is ten feet, and the proposal is seven point seven feet. Now, there are a few hardships that exist currently. The first is that the zone requirement in an RS4 zone is seven thousand five hundred square feet, and the existing lot is five thousand seven hundred and forty-six square feet. So the lot is around seventy-five percent of what is required. I don't know when the lot was created. I'm sure it predated the zoning. The second hardship is that part of the existing house, the part that's being expanded, actually, is currently seven point seven feet from the property line. So what they're doing is just extending it six feet further, the same distance it is from the current property line. So there is no increase in non-conformity. They're simply extending the right side of the house back six additional feet. Now, lastly, the applicants have approached their neighbors to share their plans and do ask if there are any concerns, and no objections or concerns were raised. Now, I would like to invite up the applicant, Sissy, in order, and to, she can introduce herself and explain why this addition is being contemplated and why these variances are being requested.
Good evening, and thank you, David. I couldn't have said it better myself. My name is Sotiria Kovatidis. People call me Sissy. I reside at two sixteen Placid Avenue with my husband. Recently, my mother sold her home, who is also a resident of Stratford. We also own and operate the Blue Sky Diner for over fifty years. So we've been residents of this town for a long time. My mother recently moved in with us, and when she did, we clearly found that it is a hardship for her to continue going up and down the stairs to get to the bedroom, which she is staying in now. And also, another hardship for her is the bathroom. Getting in and out of the tub is hard for her. So we're just looking to make the space downstairs more comfortable for her so she can live out the rest of her years comfortably with us. And that's why we are looking to make this renovation happen. That's about it. And thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
So I guess we would like to ask the commissioners and Mr. Chairman if you have any questions regarding the application?
Mm-hmm. Questions for members?
The.
Ms. Cleary?
Front side yard, where it's five foot one. Obviously, was the, building was done before zoning things happened. I mean, the back is less than, you know, what the front is.
Well, actually, the side yard, there's a bump out in the side yard that is five point five to the side yard.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
But the proposed addition, it jogs further away.
Yeah.
Than that. Is that a chimney on the right side?
Is it?
Looks like it could be.
The closest part to the property line. Well, anyway, the current setback on the right is five point five feet. This, but the house jars back a little bit where the porch is. That's gonna be removed, so they're proposing to keep that line straight. They're not going over to five feet. But good question, Judy.
Yeah, it's just going straight back, not going out to either side.
There, there is no garage, is there?
A garage? It's not attached to the house. It's unattached.
It's at the back of the property.
Back of the, I see.
So I just want to make sure I understand, so the, the area that the screened porch is right now, the addition is gonna basically go over that or on that piece of land, let's put it that way, and then extend beyond that?
Right, six feet back.
Okay.
Not out to the side, but just, yeah, that existing part of the house. We're using that room, which is now, what did we say was twelve?
Sixteen feet wide.
Sixteen?
Ten feet deep.
By ten, yeah, so we're looking.
And then go on six more feet.
Six more feet. Okay, so now, okay, now I understand there. So, yeah, just looking at the diagram gets a little, it looks a little strange, but I just wanted to make sure I understood what was going on there. Okay? All right. Let me look at one thing.
I'm thinking of the right place. I thought there was like a little patio.
It's, there's a little stone patio there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So what happens with that?
That is where, if you see, there's a proposed, like, a little, where's that little deck? This little proposed deck over to the side?
Yes.
That little patio will be covered by that little proposed deck. But it's the same width, same size.
Same dimensions.
Yeah, same dimensions.
Yeah, okay.
So really, the only difference is the six feet going back.
Yeah. And so that's the extra room that you want. Now, the room is there, and here's this little patio, which will be a deck. So is it going to be like a?
That'll be a little like entrance way, like stairs for her to have her own entrance into her room.
And she'll have access to that deck herself?
Right. Right, right, right.
It's a good plan.
Yeah. We're just trying to make it comfortable for her.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, having herself her house was a big move in itself, so.
Yeah. It's very difficult for people to change like that.
Yeah, yeah, especially at that age.
Okay, any other questions for members? Hearing none.
Well, thank you very much for sharing her petition.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in favor of this petition? Anybody wish to speak in favor? Anybody wish to speak in opposition? Anybody in opposition? Hearing none, we'll take a motion to close. Mr. Carroll, second, Ms. Cleary. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Carries unanimously. Mr. Carroll, you want to call petition number four, I believe we're on?
One seventy Orin Oak Lane, Petition of Jose Negerio, Seeking Site Plan Review, Variance of Section 6.1.5 of the Fence Height Regulations to Allow a Six-Foot-Tall Fence Within the First Twenty-Five Feet of the Property, Incidental to a Private Residence Condo Development. The hardship given, the layout of the property and its proximity to a neighboring parcel where interactions have been very difficult. This fence is essential to establishing a safe and clear boundary and to improve safety and privacy within the multi-unit residential complex.
Is the petitioner present? Please come forward, give us your name and address and description of your plan.
David Negerio from one hundred Buck Hill Road in Easton. Sorry, what's the second part you need?
Just, yeah, you give name and address, and then just an overview of the proposal that you have in front of the board.
Yeah, the overview is we like to put a six-foot fence at eighteen feet.
Speak up a little.
Sorry, I like to put a six-foot fence at eighteen feet from the curb as opposed to the standard code for twenty-five feet from the curb. I think it adds a little more composure and just works well with the space better. And then just the neighboring gentleman has been here, I think, a lot and been quite noisy, has made, put up a lot of signage. And just want to kind of separate ourselves from that and kind of keep a composition of the subdivision together. And it works, and will still maintain line of sight, as well as, we have Seven Maples doing a lot of the landscaping on and around the fence. So it should blend in nicely and beautify the city.
You're asking for the, that's chain link fence to be ten feet tall, right?
It'd actually be a wooden fence with horizontal planks. That's really popular right now. It would be six feet tall at eighteen feet from the curb, as opposed to the current standard, which is, I think we're allowed to do four feet at that distance, but not six. But the rest of the fences are six, and it kind of makes more sense. And the rest of the fence is according to code.
There's a, in the, in the file, there's a, I guess, an example of it located at three thirty-five Chestnut Hill Road in Norwalk. It should be in your packet, or at least on the online photo, so that you can see.
Should be as close to identical that as possible.
Where is, exactly is the noise coming from?
It's not as much the noise, the street noise, first, we want. But secondly, there is a lot of signage and just a lot of A30G applications next door, and we just wanted ourselves to be completely separate from that. And we wanted our, the people in our subdivision to feel, have a continuity of a community. And just, while the fences match, be nice.
You want your privacy, so people don't traffic in that area into the complex that's being built.
That's correct.
That's correct? The fence the rest of the way around is six foot?
Yes.
Thank you.
Now, just so I understand, are you, so you're not the, the property owner?
That's my father. We, we work together on this. But I am representing him today.
Okay, that's fine. I mean, I just wanted to make sure I understood. And does he live at that house right now?
No, he lives in Woodbridge, Connecticut, seventeen Woodbine Road, Woodbridge, Connecticut.
So who?
We are the developers of the property.
Okay. So does anybody live at the house right now?
It's vacant. It's not even built.
Oh, it's not even built?
Well, ten of the eleven houses are built, but the one that's right on the street right there, well, last I checked, was just a foundation, so.
Yeah, I was there today. They're just digging.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But they should go pretty fast.
There haven't been any certificate of occupancies issued for final construction yet.
Okay.
So they're still well underway.
Okay, and the, and the fence itself goes along Orin Oak Lane, right through the, at the front of the, on that main street there? It's not just between the properties, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
The fence should go all the way around. Some, some of the neighbors already have a fence.
Yeah.
We just kept utilizing that. Seemed redundant. But the portion that's up for discussion is just along Orin Oak Lane. And that's the only one that's needs an appeal. The rest of it is, should be very standard operating procedure.
Yeah, I got that one over here. Just make sure, make sure I was reading it correctly. Yeah.
Okay, further questions for members? Thank you very much. Is there anybody who wishes to speak in favor of the petition? Anybody in favor? Anybody wish to speak in opposition to the petition? Anyone in opposition? Hearing none, we'll take a motion to close. By Ms. Lynch, second by Mr. Carroll. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, no. Carries unanimously. And all the way back around. Ms. Cleary, you want to call petition number five?
Do you want me to read it?
Okay.
So it's thirteen fifty.
Ms. Lynch, go ahead. I mean, Ms. Swiele, sorry.
Thirteen fifty-five Hillside Avenue. Petition of Eunice Passy, Seeking a Site Plan Review and Variance of 3.2.1 of the Side Yard. of the side yard setback and overall building coverage for expansion of a non-conforming structure for a proposed rear and second floor addition to the existing single-family dwelling in an RS4 zone. Hardship pre-existing non-conforming lot and structure created prior to the enactment of zoning.
Okay, petitioner present? Please come forward, give us your name and address, and present your case.
Good evening, board members. My name is Yunus Tashi. I reside at 163 Broadway in Milford, Connecticut.
Okay.
And my company, Tashi Enterprises LLC, owns the subject property.
Okay.
I broke my easel on some boards to be able to explain, if you don't mind me.
If you need a minute to set up, go ahead. Can, just when you speak, can you use the microphone so we can hear you? Yeah, thank you.
I'm here before you because my applicant, my application is seeking variances for side yard and front yard and lot coverage. My hardship, as stated, is the lot and the structure being non, pre-existing non-conforming entities and thus creating a disadvantage for the property and the structure. Because we would like to actually keep the existing structure, right, this is the uncovered area, and the porch together. Because I checked the basement and the studs and everything, it's in pretty good shape. So instead of just tearing down the whole thing, we would like to propose an addition at the back, which is roughly 13 by 20 feet, and an uncovered deck, which is roughly 12 by 20 feet. Doing so also the existing garage, the one-car garage. I'm just going to knock it down if I can and then move it right here so that it just appeals and then conforms with the quality of the development that I wish, that I will reach within this project. So, again, the orange things are the new structures. And this is the new garage, so it's being, going to be carried from here to there by means of knocking down and rebuilding.
Interesting.
So...
Go ahead.
What was your purpose to moving the garage?
I'm sorry?
Why are you knocking it down or moving the garage?
Oh.
Or did you already explain that?
Yeah.
Oh.
The garage, it's not seen clearly right here because it's dashed line. It's now in the way of my proposed addition, as well as the deck. And the structure is not very good, actually. So it has deteriorated, unlike the house.
I saw it today.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
I agree with you.
Shortly, these are the existing floor plans, so we are keeping this floor, but altering it for my new plan. But the second floor is going to be knocked down entirely, including the roof.
It's going to be what?
I'm just going to knock down the roof and the, and the walls in its entirety so that I can actually build up another story on the existing footprint, as well as the addition of the rear.
Okay.
So, there's going to be a new basement with a crawl space to allow the new addition. We are keeping the basement as it is and the foundation for the porch. However, we would like to propose to knock down these existing glass partitions and make it an open porch. So it's not encroached more in the body of the building. So this is the new plan for the existing structure. And this is the, this is the addition at the back. The first floor of the addition is dedicated totally to a kitchen, which I believe is the focal point of the house. And I believe a deck opening to a kitchen, sort of minimum these dimensions allows a seating group, as well as a outside dining area. That's why I picked those dimensions and not more than that. The second story of this project, which is entirely new, is allowing me to have four bedrooms and two bathrooms. However, this is, this, this area is going to be dedicated to master bedroom, the addition, which will have cathedral ceiling, so there's not going to be a floor on it. It's just going to have a cathedral ceiling. The proposed elevations are as such that it is a 30-feet building, as the regulation goes. So this is an open porch. I'll try and make something contemporary here, like a cable railing and such. Black aluminum windows with white interiors and everything. It's going to be clad with, with board and batten in the, in the front and lap siding at the sides. So, basically, this is existing but opened up. This is existing, but it's just going up one floor. And this is the new addition, which is one and a half stories tall. And I'm not utilizing the attic, there's not much space. It's just dedicated to storage and, dry storage and mechanical.
So the addition is the master bedroom?
The addition is the kitchen in the first floor, master bedroom in the second, yeah. And I'm adding a dorm for the, basically, the plastic quality of the elevation. This is the elevation of the, elevation drawing of the rear addition. This is the deck leading to the French doors for the kitchen. And this is the master bedroom. I like French doors, so I just introduced another one there with a little French balcony so that actually the residents can have a little bit of a view of the outside. Not much to see, but I'm planning to add some bushes and shrubs and everything, so, just to make it appeasable. Do you have any questions for me?
Questions from members? Ms. Cleary?
Have you heard anything from neighbors?
I just had the chance to talk to one of my neighbors. I should have talked to my neighbors. It's just, I didn't have the time, not a good excuse. I should have, and then they are entitled to know what my intentions are. But I think two of my dear neighbors came here. Yes, yes.
Well, they'll have the opportunity to make comments after your presentation.
True. This is a single-family zone. Yeah. It's a single-family home with about 2,000 square foot on a gross, yeah. Meaning? No, the property lines are obviously not changing. The first builder, this is a 1914 home, the first builder built it.
If you can just address your remarks to the board so we can hear the, hear your answers. I know they've gone a little bit out of, off of procedure, but if you could just let us hear your answers, okay?
Okay. So, the existing building was built prior to the established mission of the current zoning regulations. In one corner, I'm just five foot six, 5.6 inches, and a little bit more on this side. So, the property is, is, has been subdivided in the 1940s, I believe. And then they moved the house from 1345 to across the street, I heard, yeah. So basically, I'm keeping everything together. Yes, I'm indeed building another floor, but I'm not increasing the non-conformity. And when I do the addition and the deck, I'm actually pulling back enough to comply with the current zoning regulation, which is 10 feet setback. This is for the, this is the hillside. This is Nichols.
Yep, I know.
Yeah, and no, this is the back. At, at the back, the side yard.
Yeah.
And the rear yard is pretty sufficient, but the side yard, because it was built that way, it's, it's a little closer to the lot line.
Okay, excuse me, let me just, I'm just going to step in. So the, the way this works is, the gentleman here, as the petitioner, will make his presentation. And then, and that's where we are sort of right now. And then what I'll do is I'll call for any public comment, and that's a time for you to ask questions. And then he gets a chance to come back and respond to them. So, he still has the floor right now for his presentation. So, if you have questions, just hold them for a second, and, and then you'll have an opportunity for, for you to ask the, put the questions into the record, if you will, and then he'll have a chance to respond to them, okay?
Thank you. So although the hardship presents a disadvantage, one advantage is, my neighbor's on Nichols. It's their backyard, so I'm not encroaching as if I would if it was a side setback for them. And because it's almost 20 feet from the lot line here, when this property is developed, it's vacant right now, there's going to be 10 feet more setback, I mean, distance between those two buildings. And I have a pretty deep rear yard, so I'm, I'm nowhere encroaching the property line here. So in terms of casting shadows, blocking airways and everything, I, I believe this project is just going to be on a good path.
Okay, so I'm glad you did say that it's a 1914 construction, because that's one of the issues that's in front of us, is that it's a pre-existing, or house preceding the, what you want to call it, the adoption of the zoning regulations. Are you, you're the owner of the property?
Yes.
And you, do you live there?
I live in Milford.
You live in Milford, oh, yeah, I didn't know you did that. When did you, how long have you owned the property?
I closed on 20th of June this year.
Okay, okay.
So I'm a developer, so...
And it, it does appear that with the, at least it's in the, the comments from staff, that we're actually noticing that by changing the way the rear staircase and the landing and the positioning of the garage is actually bringing it more into conformance with our regulations. At least that was his opinion, so that's something I just want to make sure we get out there.
Thank you.
Okay. Any questions from members? Okay. Okay, then, what I'll do is, I'm going to call for public comment, and then you'll have a chance to respond, okay? Okay, so anybody wish to speak in favor of this petition? Or if you wish to speak in opposition, or if you want to make general comments, we'll take, since there's only two of you, we'll make it easy. Well, we'll give you a chance, okay? Yeah.
Yeah, speak into the microphone so we can hear.
And just give us your name and address.
I'm just asking if he's going to knock down this existing garage and if he's going to relocate it.
I think that's in the proposal.
He said that he's going to do that.
That's what he's going to do.
Where is he going to relocate it to? Is he going to go back into the empty lot?
Yeah, Mr. Brennan? Excuse me. Folks, Mr. Brennan's going to, the administrator's going to show you. Yeah, I know.
Okay, so he's going into the empty lot?
No, nope. This is the property I'm here. So it's going to be four feet off of the side property, three off of the rear. And that way, that one garage isn't in the middle of the backyard, just shifted. It's right here. And then this shows... Yep, so the driveway right here, right now, goes right through here.
If you could just, yeah, give us, just give us your, your name and address, and if "fine with me" is what you want to let us know, just say those words, okay?
Lou Polatano at 242 Nichols Avenue.
Your name again?
Lou Polatano.
Lou Polatano.
So you're a close neighbor then, right?
He's right in, I'm right in back in front of him.
Okay.
Any other comments?
No, I'm fine with it.
Okie doke. Gentlemen, sir, Mr. Sound Tigers, you want to have a, if you have your name and address?
My name is John Casey, K-A-S-E-Y. I, property at 252 Nichols Avenue. The rear of my property butts up to his side property. I have no issues with that. I'm fine with it. I've been fine with it for 36 years, since I've lived in Stratford. And I'm looking forward to beautifying the neighborhood, because it is a mess. And I applaud him for doing what he's doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so you get one last, if anything you want to, you know, just address, or if not, we can just be done?
I'm also, thank you so much.
Okay, great. We'll take a motion to close by Ms. Lynch, second by Ms. Cleary. All in favor say aye. Opposed, no. Carries unanimously. We'll take a motion to close the public hearing and proceed into our administrative session. And Ms. Lynch, I mean, sorry, Ms. Sweeley, what am I doing? This is the second time today. Second, please. Ms. Cleary, all in favor say aye.
I want to close this out. I do have one more question, as if there's going to be another house on the adjoining property.
We have no information to that nature, just...
I, I believe so at some point. As of right now, we don't have any applications for a building permit or any...
And is this gentleman, the same gentleman that owns that property?
I believe he is.
All right, just for my general information, thank you, folks, for your time.
And related to the other gentleman's comment, the property is in a RS4 zone, which does not allow multifamily. So only single families can be built there.
Okay. With that, we'll now declare the public hearing closed at 7:48 PM. And we can begin our admin session. Okay, we'll take up, hold on, let me just get myself organized here. Too many, too many things going here. Okay, let's take, we want to take petition number one off of the table. By Ms. Cleary, second, Mr. Carroll. All in favor say aye. Opposed, no. Carries unanimously. We can now discuss. Is there a motion to approve? Yes?
Yeah, I'm, I'm moved to approve.
Motion approved by Ms. Sweeley. Is there a second? Ms. Lynch? Very good, we can now discuss. Okay.
The resident of 53rd Ashwood Terrace, she is, they're trying to find a way to go around the septic. So, they've gotten the measurements, so the pool, what they're building, will not be affected when they're installed in an in-ground swimming pool. will not be affected when they're installed in an in-ground swimming pool. It is a single-family dwelling. They're just asking for 50 feet because of the septic, and they're involving a wetlands, which they were unaware of. They do provide a safe area for their children, of course, bordering up, securing. And they are following the guidelines of the zoning commission of the 25-foot setback. I would approve this, propose as a fence also being built in compliance with the zoning board.
Okay, further comments from members?
I guess my only concern in this.
With your microphone?
I guess my only concern in this one is if everything's been good with wetlands, as far as the.
Yes, it does say that.
Well, it says that it's, it is, it is within 50 feet, so it's, it's still non-conforming.
So, it's, it's non-conforming to our regulations. They, they did apply for a administrative permit, which Kelly Carrigan's approved as part of the.
She has approved it for sure.
Yep.
Okay.
And I, I believe it's attached online, I'm not sure if it's made it.
Yeah, I have it here, but it really doesn't say that it's approved. It says that it, just states that it's still non-conforming to the, unless I'm looking at the wrong form.
I mean, the one that I noted was the one that was, unless we're, I'm not sure if we're talking about the same thing, that was in your comments there, where it said is, approve the reference project with conditions set forth. I'm not sure what those conditions were, but.
Yeah, that's coming directly from the administrative permit.
From the permit?
Yep.
Okay, so I think that's probably good. And that was also reviewed by Health Permit Department, too, so it's gone through a few. I mean, it is sort of a unique area, and I think they've demonstrated that it's because of their proximity to the wetlands. They did respond, now to steal your thunder, Ms. Sweeley's question, that they did explore other alternatives for where they could put it, if I'm getting this one correctly, or am I getting the two pools mixed up? No, I think I am, I think I'm good. It's unique to them, they didn't even, they did not, they were unaware of it at the time they became interested in. It does seem like this is a minimum necessary action to relieve the hardship. So, I'm tending to agree with folks, it seems like this one's in pretty good order, and probably worthy of approval. Further comments from members? Hearing none, we'll go for a vote. Ms. Cleary? No, okay. Ms. Sweeley?
Approve.
Ms. Lynch?
Approve.
Mr. Carroll?
Uh, approve.
And the chair votes yes, so the ayes are four, the nays are one, and the variance is approved.
Mr. Chairman, I just had a question.
Yes, sir.
Did we get, I haven't seen letters of mailing for all these applications?
I have all of them for every application, yep.
Okay, moving on to, make, take a motion to take 225 Oak Bluff off the table. Mr. Carroll, is there a second to take off the table? Nobody wants to take it off the table?
I do.
Ms. Lynch? Okay, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, we'll take a motion, somebody wanna make a motion to approve, so we can discuss it? Make a motion by Ms. Lynch, is there a second? By Mr. Carroll, okay, discussion.
For 25, 225 Oak Bluff Ave., petition Kelly Acoppi and Joseph Versa. This house was built in 1953, so it was constructed from there. And Denise wrote, her neighbor from 235 Oak Bluff, did give a great recommendation, indicated her father has served Stratford community as well. And the back of the house, the second floor will be the addition, which will be suitable for hardship. I agree for the extension and the addition. It is in compliance due to the petition was, of course, not born in 1953. So, this house was really set. And the findings of the amount of existing setback of 6.1 feet along the northeastern property line is okay, I think that's okay. And the minimum side yard setback requirement of 10 feet to the current existing setback of 6.1 feet long, that should, is what I'm correcting myself on. I think this is in compliance for the homeowner to extend an addition in the back of the house, where they have room as well. And they can assist the hardship of her mother as well. Is that the mother?
Hmm, no.
No. Oh, we're in, oh, 55, okay. So, it's the, okay, sorry, so it is the back of the house, second addition floor, okay, second floor addition, yeah, that's fine. That's fine.
Okay, further comments from members? Mr. Carroll?
Yes, my question's regarding, again, with the front porch, when I questioned if that was part of the permit for this particular addition, or that was separate, I'm a little unclear on that.
That was a separate building permit for the front porch.
Separate building permit, that's already, so the front porch is already constructed?
Yeah, they, they started construction on a while, a while ago. And they submitted their permit for the proposed plan tonight, which was put on hold, so.
Because the front porch is also in violation as well. So, that's why I'm wondering how that slipped through the cracks. It appears, anyway, on, on the drawing, that it's in line with the left side of the house.
Right, I, I do believe there was a pre-existing porch there to begin with.
Okay.
So, it didn't require a side yard setback?
So, you're saying that front porch was already passed?
Yes.
I'm sorry?
The front porch was already passed from the.
Well, there's a building permission for it.
Was, a building permit has been issued for it.
So, either way, it's a separate.
It's, correct.
A separate thing.
Separate.
Separate issue.
Yep.
Issue, but not a separate variance they're going.
So, actually, the way, the way this front porch is laid out, those front stairs are no longer there. They come out on the right side of the house.
Okay.
So, the permit that they submitted for it, they moved the front porch right up to, let's say, the front setback, and put the entryway on the right-hand side of the house where the staircase would access.
Okay.
Ms. Cleary?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have to just hold on it.
Yeah, we already have, we already have a motion on the floor, so we're just in discussion. Okay? Further comments? Okay, the other thing I just wanna make sure we talk about, I think it's come out in the record that this was 1953. So, it's predating the, well, actually, I like the way it was written here. It says, the property itself is compliant with dimensional standards. The pre-existing non-conforming dwelling does not conform with the current side yard setback, making any further development extremely difficult to comply with the current zoning regulations. Very well written. I think we also talked about that it is pretty much in harmony with what's going on in that neighborhood. It seems like others have very similar setups that are there. It's not increasing the footprint, so it's a minimal impact course of action. So, I think we're actually, does qualify for us to grant this variance, so I'll recommend approval. Further questions from members? If not, we'll go for a vote, let's go the other way around, Mr. Carroll?
Uh, approve.
Ms. Lynch?
Approve.
Ms. Sweeley?
Approve.
Ms. Cleary? And the chair votes yes, the ayes are five, the nays are zero, the hardship is approv, or the variance is approved. We don't approve hardships, we approve variances. Okay. Item number three, 216 Placid Avenue, somebody wanna make a motion to take it off the table? Ms. Lynch, second by Mr. Carroll, all in favor say aye. Opposed, no, carries unanimously, now we'll take a motion to approve. Ms. Cleary, this time we got you, second by Ms. Lynch, okay, discussion. Keep your.
It's not working, now it is.
Now it is.
I, I think it's a good idea, keeping a family together, a mother with her family, and making it easier for her, and, you know, she'll have a little patio, too. I, I think it's a wonderful plan. I do, too, very admirable, and so often elderly people are just kind of left a molder away somewhere.
Before we go too far, can I just ask you to hold for a second? Mr. Brennan, I caught, and I wrote down here, this is two separate variances that they're asking for, or do we approve them in block? I saw one is lot coverage and one is side yard. Okay. Under 3.2.1C? Okay, so we only need to have one vote on one item. Okay, gotcha, thank you, just wanna make sure. Okay?
I think, representing Davis Cilo, if I'm saying his name correctly, for petitions Sarita and Cristos Kukavas. I'd agree with them, because what they're asking for is an extra bedroom, screen porch to a bedroom. They're gonna demolish the porch, they are abiding by the 10 feet, or 10 foot deep, 16 wide, 16 by 16, which is good. Extending it to six foot, no increase to conformity. It's gonna go six foot back, they're gonna renovate space downstairs for mom to have access going in the first floor. The lot coverage from the existing is 25.5% to their proposed 28.1%, which is their requesting, is, is additional for the bedroom from the proposed that they had. I also saw that the lot that they're having for the size, 5,746 foot of the required of 7,500 foot, is a lot of 75%. I don't see nothing wrong with that, because it's in the back, so the back has a lot of room, it's not in the front of the house. So, the, it's good. It's good for a mom. It's good for a setback that is in requirement of just 10 feet to the current existing setback of 7.7 feet of the existing, okay, porch.
Okay, as mentioned, there's two separate variants, or two separate things we're looking at here, coverage and side yard. Again, the, the property itself is, is undersized, as noted here. The non-conformities do appear to create a legitimate hardship. The neighbors are in support, there has not been anybody complaining about we're making any opposition to it. It doesn't, it does cover, you know, 28.1%, so that's actually, that's fairly big, that's an increase of 3%. But I believe it's been mitigated by the fact that they are going to basically take most of the footprint of what is currently the porch, and they're making it essentially bigger. So, it, it's not like we're creating quite a bit more coverage of the, to accommodate this. And, you know, Stratford being a community that has, you know, high senior population, we do see a lot, sometimes these, we do see some of these in-law apartments becoming quite common within the town. And it's something that we've been very supportive of in the past. So, and, so I think everything seems to be pretty much in order here, that it qualifies for the, for the hardship. They've been there for a while, but obviously, this is a different type of use. They didn't create them themselves, but it is exactly just the way this, as an undersized lot, they are gonna obviously have some, you know, difficulties that other places would not, if they were in a standard-sized lot. So, I would, I would be supporting this petition. Further discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Cleary? Ms. Sweeley?
Approve.
Ms. Lynch?
Approve.
Mr. Carroll? And the chair votes to approve, so the ayes are five, the nays are zero, and the petition is approved. Okay. 170 Orin Oak Lane, can I take a motion to, take it off the table?
Yes, yes.
By Ms. Lynch, that sounded like a motion, do we have a second? Mr. Carroll? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no, carries unanimously. We have a motion to approve the petition. By Ms. Lynch, is there a second? By Mr. Carroll, okay, discussion.
The 170 Orin Oak Lane, just wants to build a six-foot-tall fence. There's no occupancy in the building as of right now. It is just to keep their property secure and non-people, like, entering their property line, which is currently going under construction at this time. So, I agree with the fence to go up for this complex and this condominium that they are building right now for 11 townhouses.
Okay. Further discussion?
What was the firehouse mentioned?
I mean, that's obviously been, there's a lot going on in that particular block, so do you wanna?
Yeah, so I, I referred the application to the fire department for any comments or concerns they may have had over the six-foot-tall fence.
So, that was that letter that you sent, that you got back a reply?
Yeah, it was. Yep, Ben McGorty and Bob Daniels. And their response was, they have no comments or concerns regarding the fence.
Thank you. And what, what is their position? Are they attached to the fire department, or?
Yeah, they're, they're, they both hold positions within the fire department. They typically review any sort of land use applications, if, if we have a concern.
I don't really see how this would affect the fire department, or the opposite. You know, being right next to the fire department, certainly.
Right, our, my initial was concerned, concern was any sort of view lane that may be obstructed from the trucks coming in or coming out. You know, as, as we have down here, these trucks always back into the building, where they have a remote activation, so they can change the lights as they approach. They don't have that ability up there, so that's, that was one of my concerns going into it.
For a light, for like, light distractions?
Just, just for traffic control.
Yeah, there, there's no traffic light up there on Orin Oak Lane, as it is like, you know, if you pull out here, if you ever come through there, they can basically trigger the traffic lights to give them the right of way and stop traffic and go through. So, I think the concern that was expressed was that, you know, they're gonna have, as they're exiting the fire department, we just wanted to make sure that they don't have any line-of-sight issues of traffic coming that would prevent them from navigating onto the road from there.
I see.
I think, kind of my concern is just that, you know, they're not asking for a foot, they're asking for over seven feet. So, or over, just over six feet in distance, and, you know, a six-foot fence that close to the road might just seem like a billboard out close to the, out that close to the road, and then the, the. And then the example that they gave of, you know, to protect them from signage, I don't know that, it's their own signage that's going to go out in front of that.
It's not their own signage. It's the lot next door.
Well, but that's, that's temporary. That's not really signage. That's, that's an application for...
145 units if they're...
So that is obviously going to be temporary. I'm thinking any signage would be if they were going to put something titled the development or, you know...
No, no.
But I guess those would be my concerns. It just, is that going to be too intrusive on the street? As you're going down the street where the houses have very big setbacks of 35 and 40 feet from the street, and this is going to bump out at 18 feet from the street. So, just something to consider. I see where they're coming from because they want to put it on the property line. They don't want to cut the property down. But maybe is the six foot something we want to look at, the height of it?
Yeah. Let me just bring that one up again.
At first, I mean, I was under the impression that was going to be a chain link fence. And I thought, that's not too slightly...
No, it appears to be like almost a wooden stockade or panel.
It's not going to be a commercial looking, it's going to be a nice looking wood. Oh, I don't know if it's going to be wood, but it's going to be a nice looking fence.
The impression I had to begin with, that was a chain link fence.
Yeah, yeah. And they will have a pretty robust landscaping plan that was approved with it. But it's, it's probably not going to be a lot within that, along that front line.
Something similar with slatted...
Oh, can I? Was this, is this unpacked?
Yes.
Oh. Yeah, not bad.
Initially, I was, the reason I asked the question...
Greatest picture, but...
What I was, what I was asking the question is like, okay, this is facing Orin Oak Lane, is because I was kind of under the impression when I was just reading through it that it was going to be to separate it from the property where all the development has been happening. Which seems entirely reasonable to me. I mean, they're going to be doing an awful lot of work there. Once they actually build it, it's going to be...
They haven't gotten the approval.
It's been going on and on for, since I was on, I think, my first, first or second zoning term. So it seems like it's been an eternity ago. So what the eventual, what is eventually going to show up there, you know, could be years from now. But I have no objection to the fence between the, between the properties. But now that we're talking about this, I'm a little curious as to why it has to face Orin Oak Lane.
That's what I was mentioning too.
Right. That's why I say that the argument of the signage, again, the signage is to the left of the property.
Yeah.
Out in, not on Orin Oak Lane.
I do think part of their plan may be, I know they've spoken about it, not in terms of any applications, but potentially a gated access at one point.
To the community that they want to build?
For the 11 units that go up there. Yep.
And that's fine as well. Again, I personally am not necessarily opposed to the fence in any way. I think the fence is fine. I just question the six foot height, which is what they're, the other half of their...
It is tall. Yeah, I mean, I'm not six foot myself, so, you know. 5'9" last time I looked, so another four inches. That is pretty tall, yeah.
Some type of barrier I think is appropriate there because that is the side yard of that house is facing Orin Oak Lane. So whether it's...
Oh. That's true. This house is oriented differently.
Right.
See, I'm so used to see, I'm so used to seeing the old house there. I'm glad, this is the reason we have these debates and discussions here, because you start seeing things that you didn't...
They do have a valid reason for the privacy of it because if they were to put a swimming pool or, you know, something in that backyard, which is kind of the side yard there facing, it is going to face Orin Oak Lane.
And the rest of the fence is six foot.
What's that?
Yeah, I asked him that. It's six foot, six foot, six foot or...
Well, that kind of gives a noise barrier too. For people living there, for traffic noise coming from Orin Oak Lane. So if they've got that six foot tall fence that's attractive and everything, that would help with having more peaceful...
You know, there's another issue here. And I was hearing it and was starting to think about it. Hardship. Given the layout of the property and its proximity to a neighboring parcel where interactions have been very difficult, the fence is essential to establish a safe and clear boundary and improve safety and privacy within the multi-unit residential complexes. Is that a statutorily recognized hardship?
No, because I see what he's saying here. I see what he's saying here. It's like he doesn't want anyone to come on their property, and he wants privacy, and residencials doesn't want anyone, you know, even when FedEx is delivering their parcels and they don't want anyone stealing their parcels, FedEx or UPS. But it's not really a hardship there. That's a strike. And number two, safe and clear, you're already, the complex has camera, which hopefully they'll have, you know, security cameras built on the property. And privacy is, it's not really a hardship. It's not really a hardship for you, for you bringing that aware. And of course, this is true. Is this going to be permanent?
Yep.
Yeah. Personally, I don't see a problem with that.
I mean...
What do you think?
I think it's fine. I mean, it's fine. I mean, we're in death of it, you know, but it's not really a hardship for parcels and security measures. That building, complex should already build cameras and stuff. But I do agree with the fence. Complexes do like fence, noise barrier, traffic horns, people throwing trash. The trash doesn't come forward, snow, snowing. They can shovel their own area.
Yeah, I don't think about that.
So I agree with the fence. They have a property line that, you know, covers them. Don't salt down in the winter. Of course, we have, you know, winter storms here. People don't have to come on their property line. And, yeah, I mean, I still don't mind the fence going up.
So earlier today, just a little bit of a background, our attorney, Mr. Florrick, sent me a note. He's feeling under the weather today. And everybody be careful. There seems to be something going around that everybody's catching. So he says, do you really need me to be here tonight? And I says, no, everything seems pretty straightforward.
Who's that?
Alex Florrick, our attorney.
Oh.
And besides, I want to make sure nobody catches anything. We don't need any, none of us need that, trust me. I'm beginning to think that, I have a question about whether there's actually a legal basis to do this, even if it makes complete sense. It's almost like the situation we had down in, in the, it was a lordship property, I forget, back in the, when we were still over at Birdseye School. You know, they had cited a particular hardship that seemed... Yeah, 210s per street. You're right. That's exactly the one, yeah. And I wasn't really sure if that would be a legitimate flaw of the land that would qualify for it.
Well, that's if the hardship has to pertain to the land.
Has to pertain to the land, yeah. I mean, this is definitely a situation. I mean, if, I could definitely see in, I could see a situation where we would probably want, where there might be, and it might not even be our board's purview, but it might be, might be somebody's purview in order to allow them to do it in between there. Because there's going to be a lot of construction in that area at some point. So even if it was at a temporary basis, I could see that. But I'm not sure if we have the ability to give it a complete hardship for an area that's not even really impacted by it. And just, it seems it's a little general and it's not really speaking to it. So I think what I am going to suggest we do is table this one until we can have it reviewed by the town attorney. Give us just a little bit of question, on the questions, the legal question here, and then we can make a decision. I don't think this is time sensitive for anything. So I think that's probably be the best way for us to do this and take it up in October.
I agree 100%.
So at that note, I'll make a motion to table. Second by Ms. Lynch. I think I got you first. All in favor say aye. Opposed, no, carries unanimously. So we'll ask Alex to take a look at this one. Hope he feels better. Okay. This was fun. I liked this one. 1355 Hillside Avenue. Take a motion to take it off the table?
Aye, too.
By Ms. Lynch. Is there a second? By Mr. Carroll. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, carries unanimously. So it's on the table. Anybody want to make a motion to approve?
Approve.
By Ms. Lynch. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Carroll. Okay, discussion, members?
Does that sound like...
Yes.
It will.
It does appear to be that way. Yeah. Okay. Go ahead, make some, you can put your microphone on and then you can just make some remarks for the record here.
Absolutely.
Yep.
For 1355 Hillside Avenue, petition Yonah Staski. The plan that he's trying to do is remodel the property and make him a single-family Cape Cod style home with a detached one-car garage, which was constructed in 1914. Is now going to be remodeled and comply with the before and after look. So the existing home currently sits 6.8 feet off of the property, front property line, and the 1.6 feet from existing front steps where the current requirement is 20 feet. So the existing side yard setback is 5.6 feet, where currently regulations call for a 10-foot setback. He's not proposing any future enroachment into the setbacks, and that is going to stay. He is currently going to keep and remodel the entire home, actually. Move the garage from one side to the back of the home and remodel the home, which the home would look much better in compliance of the current home now looking. And he stated he just got this house in June, June 20th, around there. And showing how he's going to remodel the inside. He stated the basement was structured. He's not going to touch the basement. From the first floor and the second floor, every room will have new remodels from master bedroom to bathrooms to living room and kitchen, which he provided us the map of what he's going to install. He said he loved the French doors. Doors, a lot because everything was French. So bonjour, comment ça va? Merci. And he loves it. He loves the French, you know? I would have spoke French to him. I think it's going to be a pretty home on the block, actually. It's going to be delightful.
I was glad to see that the neighbors were all for it.
Une bonne maison. I only know a few words, you know.
Je ne comprends pas.
It'd be a big hit in Quebec, you know?
Maybe had more questions for him and he's trying to tell us.
Yeah. Okay, further comments? Yeah, I think there's a legislative term called a colloquy, where members go back and forth, back and forth. That's not exactly what it's, in our rules, but it was working, so...
About us.
Yeah, I know, you know, if it worked, you know. Sometimes just let it ride, you know, that's what you can do. Further comments from members? I think just to make a couple of things in here. So the, I think we went through a lot of this. Is, this has actually become more compliant based on the realignment of the, basically the driveway and the garage. It's 1914, so it's existing non-conforming. You know, essentially, I think this is going to make it a much better property as we had discussed. It's not self-created. It's actually trying to bring it more into alignment with our zoning regulations. It says pre-existing non-conforming. It doesn't, the building itself does, the lot does not meet the minimum lot area or the width, so it's already pretty, pretty massive. The building coverage does increase a bit here. So we are going from 24.7 to 32.6. So that's actually a fairly large amount. I think it does kind of work because the rest of the neighborhood seems to be fairly dense. They're smaller, smaller lots, very typical Cape Cod homes that you see on Hillside Avenue. So it's not going to be completely out of character for what you see within the, within the neighborhood itself. So it should be able to absorb the amount of coverage that's on there. And quite frankly, I think it's just going to make for a much better property. Okay. Any further comments?
I was going to just say what you did about the area coverage. I think that's a bit of a concern, if it's a bit.
It is, it is, yeah.
You know, and being, they're so close to the street to begin with, 1.6 feet to the front step of the porch. I might have a little issue with the area coverage.
Mm-hmm. And I don't really see what else we could do to accommodate that. So I think that's, either it is, it is what it is at this point, I think. So that's what they suggested. So we'll let you vote last. Okay. If not, we'll take a vote. Ms. Cleary? Ms. Wheely?
Approve.
Ms. Lynch?
Approve.
Mr. Carroll?
Approve.
Okay, the chair votes yes to approve. So the ayes are five, the nays are zero, and the petition is approved. Okay. Thank you, everybody. Got through that. God, we're going late tonight. Okay, approval of the minutes of the July 7, 2025 meeting. Can I have a motion to approve? Mr. Carroll, second by Ms. Wheely. Any changes, corrections, modifications? If not, all in favor say aye.
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 Okay, any cam site reviews? Any sediment erosion control? Any members have any questions, comments, concerns to bring up to the staff or the board?
No.
Okay, and I have no other items. So the next scheduled meeting is for October 7. Or do we have petition? We have a table petition, obviously, we'll have to take up. But any new ones?
Yeah, we will probably have at least three, maybe four.
Oh.
Yep.
Business is picking up, huh?
Business is picking up.
Did you say October?
October 7.
Okay.
Yep. And so...
There's a family in there.
Is that what it is?
Yeah. Yeah, there's a family.
So anyway, the next meeting's October 7. And then I know when we get into November, I think we shift. Is it a day or a week? I forget what it is.
I have to double check.
Yeah. It's a little bit different because the first Tuesday's election day and obviously we'll all be busy.
Yeah, I have a feeling it's a day.
It's a day. It's probably a Wednesday meeting. Okay.
I believe so.
Well, we got a ways to go there. So by October, it's going to be the regular date, which is October 7.
Okay.
Okay. If there's nothing else, we'll take a motion to adjourn.
Okay. Adjourn.
By Mr. Carroll, second by Ms. Lynch. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, carries unanimously. And we are out of here at 8:29 PM. Wow. We earned our pay today, folks.
Yes.
Everybody have a good night and we'll see everybody in October.
Yeah, I have to say, when you get into having like five on the same night...
So I could, when I look for...
For me, that was really hard to...
A lot.
Even though I looked at them today, I'm thinking, am I thinking about this one or that one? It's a lot. Right, yeah. Very similar.
My mother's house, I took a picture, they're all in the window.
Really?
They're always around. But I got to keep that to show evidence. I had a great time.
Yeah, yeah, I like that. Yeah, yeah, like, I like that. All right, let's take.
Yeah, he takes that one. Okay, see you next time.
See you next time.
Good night.
Good night, I say.